I'd like to call the meeting to order. You can stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a test.
A little switch on the flag, sorry.
Use clear.
It was a test.
Welcome, everyone. We do have a visitor who has signed in wishing to speak. Jeff Torso?
Torso, yeah.
About two minutes.
Three, it's that.
Three, sorry. We haven't had somebody in so long, I forget, so...
I've been coming to these meetings for almost 30 years. I'm wondering about access to the track when it's open. I've been running at the track for 42 years. I get there between 5:00 and 5:30 a.m. And there's several other people that do the same. There's people ahead of me come about 4:00 a.m. And I just wondered if we're still going to have the same access to the track when it's all completed.
Usually this isn't a back and forth, but you want to answer that? It's a simple...
I'll give you a call tomorrow?
Okay.
Sounds good?
No, it doesn't, but...
Okay. I'll leave in my number.
All right. We have had some special committees meeting since our last meeting. I'm going to start out with alternative funding, Mrs. Goldthaus.
Sure. The Show Us Your Stripes event is all set. It's going to have a slight date change. It's going to be Friday, October 19th, from 7:00 to 10:00. It will be at the Fairdale again this year, as it was last year. And so the committee is very busily working, getting tickets out to coaches and teams, and getting posters out. It will solicit donations for the basket raffle. If anybody has anything they'd like to donate to the basket raffle, let me know. And so we will be working over the next couple of months to get that all in shape. We'll be meeting again as we move forward and look forward to another great event this year.
Great. Thank you. We had an audit committee meeting, Mr. Viallo?
Yeah, the audit committee met on August 9th with Drescher, Malkey. It was just a pre-audit with our external auditors. And we went over the timeframe back at the time the audit just started yesterday. And we're expecting the last I worked in two or three weeks. And we're looking for a timing date somewhere in mid to later September to go over.
We had a tax search area committee meeting, which for those of you who don't know what tax search area is, it's related to when people challenge their assessed valuations that they pay property tax on. In essence, part of that process is suing the school district, so we get involved sometimes.
Well, that pretty much summarizes what we do. We went through the list of open cases and discussed what level at which we feel it's in the best interest of the district to litigate a response and partner with the town to try to make sure that we don't have to give refunds. So even if we decide at some point that a lower valuation is a correct thing, we may work out a deal where that happens going forward instead of giving a refund for this year to mitigate any issues with our finances. But that's pretty much how we respond to all the cases and kind of see where we are and where our risk is.
Great. Aside from special committees, I know we participated in a legislative session.
Yeah. Mrs. McLaughlin and I went to Congressman Brian Higgins' office, Senator Chuck Schumer's office, and Senator Kirsten Gillibrand's office last Friday to discuss public education funding. It was led by two members of NISBA. And there were two members, actually three members, of the Erie County Association of School Boards. And there was also a school board member from Sweet Home and a school board member from Orchard Park. We met with reps in three of those three offices in Buffalo. We relayed federal talking points in support of public education. Priorities were laid out at the NISBA convention for this trip, so that's where the talking points came from. And the focuses this time were on salt deductions. We would obviously prefer that the federal government allow particularly New York State residents to be able to deduct local taxes. And IDEA was the second, which is supportive special education. Grant funding was promised at 40%, but it's only been funded at most in any of the school districts at 17%. Sweet Home actually relayed a story about how they are trying to mitigate their costs by bringing their autism program in-house, their 611 classroom. It costs an estimated $50,000 to $60,000 to educate a severe autistic child if we send them to a facility that is equipped to handle those students. In this case, they have six kids in-house, who they have a teacher and an aide that they're paying for across those six kids. And they've also invited other districts to bring that in-house. So the point being that we're doing everything we can. Now, we need help from the federal government to help us be able to educate those children in the manner they need to be educated in. School safety, obviously, has been a big topic recently. We requested ultimate flexibility because some schools are not as equipped as ambushed with their infrastructure. And other schools might need a mental health professional or training. But then their response was the problem comes down to which department ends up paying for that. If you're talking about a mental health professional, even though it's involved with school safety, does the DOJ pay for it? Which arm of the government is going to be tasked with paying for that? So that's where some of the argument comes from. So they're working that out. DACA protection. There are obvious points related to DACA when it comes to students. There's an estimated 800,000 DACA recipients in the country. 200,000 of them are high school students. There are 5,000 teachers in California alone that are here on DACA. And they estimate, they don't have an actual number yet, they're estimated between 2,000 and 3,000 teachers in New York State that are here on a DACA program. So obviously, we already have, there is an incoming teacher shortage. And if we then tap on an additional 2,000 to 3,000 teachers that are forced to leave, then that could create a problem. The answer to that one was that there is comprehensive reform that is in the works. And so it's not likely that anything in the near term will change with DACA because it's a much bigger issue. And so they're not likely to spend time on each of the pieces when there's a comprehensive reform in the works. Net neutrality was another issue, particularly as it relates to availability of services. I mean, to, we had to explain to them how everyone's trying to move to online testing and particularly in rural districts where they don't have good access to internet services because maybe they only have one provider. There really needs to be a focus there. IMPACT aid came up briefly. Lakeshore was one of the ECASB participants, and they have 15% Seneca Nation. But it was noted that that is for the time being a protected class, so we didn't really discuss it to a greater length, but it did come up a couple of times. Salamanca in particular was noted because they would lose multi-millions of dollars. And then it was just asked that we make grants more flexible. There are certain grants that are given to schools for specific things, and a lot of times, they don't end up getting used because the specifics to it are too hard to adhere to. And actually, one of the staffers in Gillibrand's office pointed out that that's actually not a very difficult item to tackle because it doesn't change a number. It's a cost-neutral idea. So they thought that that would have some traction, that some of the, like Smart School funds, for instance, could be made to be a little more flexible so that they wouldn't get used more. Because only one school district, Orchard Park, actually has gotten Smart Schools money. And there's very few, let's just say, that have been able to make that work for them. So all in all, we were speaking to a relatively sympathetic audience. The one staffer at Chuck Schumer's office was actually a teacher previous to his current job, so he had a lot of information and was sympathetic to our cause. There was supposed to be a meeting in the morning, which is not our district, but we would help discuss it. But the Collins office canceled the meeting for these reasons. So we didn't get any stop tips. That's it. Jess, did you have anything to add to that?
Great. Thank you. With that, I guess we can turn it over to you for the super touch.
Thanks. So Turner Construction is here to give us a Phase 1 construction update. So Mr. Torso, if you're not listening, pay attention, I may answer your question to talk about how things are progressing out there. Brittany Sains is here, as well as Karwo Zabadi. But I think Brittany plans to do a majority of the talking.
Yes. Hello, everybody. For those of you who I haven't met many of these Britain times, I'm with Turner Construction. So Karwo and I have been on site since March, primarily working outside at the track and field and tennis courts. So I'm just here to give a quick update and show you some progress photos. I'll take you through these here. So these photos are coming from our June and July work. At the top here, you can see this is the turf field. So we pulled that off, and that was being replaced. You can see the stone dust that's in place right there. So we regraded that. And in this next photo I'll show you, you can see this black material. That is the elastic shock pad that goes back down. So order of your turf field is the stone dust, then you have the shock pad. And then over on the right-hand side, you can see some of the green material over here, and that is your turf going right on top. With that, we also were simultaneously working on the track. And you can see in that photo where the trucks are driving, some construction is happening there as well. And then in this final photo, the turf field is completely laid down at this point. The large tiger in the center is where the 50-yard line is. And then they were doing their final preparations for the new track surface in this photo as well. I'll scroll up here real quick. So in this top left-hand picture, you can see where milling is actually occurring. And on the right-hand side, they're installing the new pavement there. That occurred in July. Here is a close-up of the center logo. And currently, in that picture, they're installing the rubber and sand infill. And while doing that, they also groom it to pick up the turf fibers. And they are now complete with that work as well. And these last three photos that you see here are the shock pit on the upper right-hand corner. And then on the left-hand, bottom left-hand is the new discus area. That's just the foundation. So that was backfilled, and there's going to be a cage going around that as well. And then in the bottom right-hand photo, that is the new staple chase area. So since these pictures have been taken, we have had more work happen. Like I said, these were from June and July. Now in August, as of today, we have the tennis courts repaved, and fence posts are there. We'll have the remaining fence fabric installed in the upcoming weeks, as well as the surfacing going down. So you'll have the U.S. Open green and blue on there. We also have our subcontractors back on site to install the turf and track accessories. So that includes pole vault, the lacrosse netting. We also have field goal posts. So all of that will kind of start coming together in the next few weeks as well. We're also going to be having, not this week, but the following week, the installation of the rubber on the turf, or on the track, surface. So once these last pieces fall into place, you'll really start seeing the final product. We'll have topsoil go down and seed as well. And I'm happy to report that we are on schedule, and we have a date of substantial completion of September 7th. And everything is looking good. Any questions I can answer for anybody?
Just curious, you repurposed the old turf. What happened to the old turf?
That was taken off-site and actually recycled.
Okay. I think our first home sporting event is September 13th, so it's nice to hear. Everything is on schedule. Our coaches have been very patient. Dr. Ild has done a tremendous job scheduling. I think the site was turned over to Turner around Memorial Day weekend with the hopes that we'd get it back in early fall and minimize disruptions to spring and fall sports. And so far, so good. We are, the goal for the project really was twofold. We wanted to improve the turf field as our previous one had reached its useful life, in addition to improving our tennis courts, because some of them were unusable on the property line. And in addition to that, we also wanted to increase security at the complex. So we are keenly aware that there are several residents that like to use it for fitness and recreation. So as a result, we found a nice use of technology where we'll be able to allow the complex to be open from roughly sunrise to sunset. That's always been what our signage has said, that it was open, I think it used to say from dawn till dusk. It's going to be open roughly from sunrise to sunset through two magnetized gates. One will be on the Berryman's side, where as you walk across the, or next to the tennis courts approaching the scoreboard. The other one will be on the Westmoreland side, just next to the entrance of where our fieldhouse is and our maintenance garage. So those will be programmable. And the goal is really to lock the complex and secure it overnight to prevent trespassing and loitering and vandalism in there. It's not to limit the recreational use from the community. I'm well aware that there was a great fundraising effort back in the early 2000s that allowed for that track to go in. And the alumni was instrumental in creating that initiative. So our goal is to secure it at times that we don't want people in there, but also keep it open and available to our residents. So at this point, it's scheduled for sunrise to sunset, but there's flexibility because we have the ability to program those locks. So if that doesn't work with somebody's fitness regime, we certainly have the ability to change the programming of those gates. But we found a nice balance in order to lock it overnight without just leaving it wide open and then also make it available to our community.
How much are we spending in this phase? And the athletic complex?
Yeah, it's about 2.5 million. So it's certainly, the other piece, which I think you're alluding to, is our goal was to try to protect our investment as well.
We've had issues the last couple of years.
Certainly have. We've had many issues relative to vandalism, safety, security. So we want to, I think we found a good balance where we have the ability to secure it when we need to, but not limit use from those that are using it appropriately. I think the only other thing that you may, or may or may not have mentioned, is there's also a new pole vault area next to the visitor bleachers. So the pole vaulting previously went towards Westmoreland. And the coaches and Kyle, or Dr. Ild, had suggested that it would be better, based on that west wind that we regularly get, for our track athletes to have the pole vault face the bleachers as they're running and vaulting. That wind will be more of assistance as opposed to a burden for them. But everything seems to be moving along nicely and looking forward to the grand opening, so to speak, when we can get our athletes on the field and our phys ed classes out there and have the complex back in use. Does anyone have any questions for either our architects, who are represented here by Jim Ickey, Young &amp; Wright, as well as Turner Construction? How did I do, Mr. Torso?
In the winter, it's only going to be open for a few hours because sunrise is sunset.
Well, welcome to Buffalo. But there's flexibility in there. That's always what we've had in our signage. But we're, our goal is to make sure that people who are out there for the wrong reasons are restricted, not people who are out there for the right reasons.
They're not up at 5:00 in the morning.
Right. You'll be okay. I think you'll like the new track surface as well. Be nicer on your joints.
Well, I started on the cinders. That was nice. This one was nice, too. That's why I'm still running.
Yeah. You'll enjoy it. Thank you very much. I do want to mention our director of facilities, Mr. Rampado, is not here tonight, but he, as well as Mrs. Bezinski, have worked very closely with the team, the architects, and construction management company to make sure Phase 1 has been successful. As you know, we're doing work in an area where we have many neighbors, and the team has been great in terms of responding to the needs of our neighbors and in addition, respecting their house, their property, and making sure that it's been a smooth process for everybody. So thank you very much for your attention to detail. It's been great. Moving right along, we have maybe a record for us here in terms of our first budget update. I think August might be a new record for us, but it's actually a good addition to the budget development calendar. There's been some increases to interest rates that we haven't seen over the last decade, which has prompted us to have some questions regarding how we may be able to invest wisely to generate some revenue. So the team has worked with the audit committee to put together an investment plan for the upcoming year that we'd like to share with you now as we're getting ready for a big influx with tax collection of revenue and state aid throughout the year. So Mrs. Bezinski is here, as well as Ms. Williams, our school treasurer. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. During budget development in particular, this topic came up quite frequently because we wanted to make sure that we were maximizing our revenues. And interest, with the interest rates increasing, is an area that we are happy to be able to focus on for the first time in, as Mr. Penel had mentioned, almost a decade. So Ms. Williams, our treasurer, does an excellent job keeping track of our revenues and our expenditures, not only on an annual basis in our budget, but also on a month-to-month basis. And once June comes, maybe even July and August, we're looking at those details on a daily basis for cash flow purposes. So Ms. Williams met with one of our bank representatives to discuss some investment possibilities. She has pulled together a presentation that will go through some history on what our rates have been, as well as some of the details that she pays attention to with our cash flow and what the plans are for future investments.
Hello, everyone. This is going to be a brief presentation. It is going back through a little bit of the history, where we've been, where we're headed. So it is cash, cash flow and investments. They all tie together. And the very first slide that you have is just a little recap of the cash accounts that we do have. You do authorize the banks that we use, and we do have these type of accounts in each of those banks. We've just labeled them Bank A, B, and C because we have been negotiating a little bit with them. In the primary bank that we use, we have nine checking accounts and a savings account. The second bank is where our real property tax money flows into. And then in the third bank, we have a savings account and money marketing account. I believe there's something on your agenda tonight, too, that we're looking to close one of the checking accounts. It's been a little bit dark. But when we met with the audit committee, we had a really good suggestion to kind of put some context behind this before we look at our numbers. I'm not an economist, but there's a wealth of information out, and I believe you have a little bit more of a handout from the federal funds rate history. And from the Federal Reserve, they prefer to have their funds rated between 2% and 5%, and they deem that to be a healthy economy. The high has been in March of 1980, when it was at 20%. And the all-time low hit in December of 2008, which we all know, 2%, 5%. The rates from December '08 to December '15 did not change at all. Now we are starting to see the upswing. I think a little of the detail that you have takes it from 1971 right up to the current day. And it has the events in history that happened during those times. So whether it was the OPEC embargo back in the 70s, or the savings and loan crisis in the 80s, or right up into the early 2000s with 9/11 and the mortgage crisis, we actually have a generation that has never known higher interest rates than what we've had the last 15, 20 years, which is very interesting. So how do we begin to start looking at this and investing? Just to look at your interest earnings in the district, now, this is as of a point in time. I chose June 30th of each year. But in '13, we were earning $30,000. This is across all the accounts, and that's a $48 million budget, $30,000, $48 million budget. And you can see, it dipped even lower. And then in June of this year, in January, the rates started to climb. So you can see the dates at the bottom, from January to April, it went from .06 to .65. And as of July, that has actually now climbed to .70, which is not even 1%. But we were able to gain an extra $22,000 in interest in just those last four months. Our real property taxes that were available in one of our banks, I was able to shift about $16 million of that into the bank that was paying the highest rate, and that's what gave us the $22,000. So we're encouraged that with our money that's going to flow in this fall, that we're going to begin a different type of strategy. So just a quick synopsis. Bank A, that's a little history. You can see how low those rates were. And then we were able to negotiate with this bank, and they did raise the rate. And Bank B, you can see, that's pretty much just the same, right across the whole six years. And Bank C, again, is very low. So from a cash flow monitoring perspective, this is what is happening behind the scenes every single day, every single one. And these are the reports that you are seeing. You do see the monthly treasuries reports that I prepare, and those are backed up by all of the underlying reconciliations. And each report, we have been putting over the past five, six years, a summary sheet with that. So you've always known what type of an account, the interest rate, not that you saw any movement in that interest rate, and the balance of disclosure. I do test for the collateral monthly. And then I also have a cash flow statement. You see a very downsized version of it in the board reports, but I actually have one that goes by month, and it is both projected and actual. So I kind of keep control of the patch that way. And then coming, hopefully in the fall, we'll be adding an investment schedule where you'll be able to see what we are investing in at what rates. So that, those are all the reports that you do see, because we all have a piece in the monitoring of this. And then on the internal cash accounting, I do have that detailed cash flow statement, like I just said. But I also use it to project the revenues for fund balance. So starting in January, when we start projecting fund balance, we look at cash receipts, which is our actual cash coming in. But then revenue takes on a little bit different flavor because we know what is out there to be accrued, even if it isn't in hard cash yet, and we know what we're supposed to earn. And then, as Laura mentioned, right about now, until about the end of September, we go on a day-by-day basis because our cash reserves are at their lowest right now until these taxes start coming in. Okay. So here are some of the challenges. So, here are some of the challenges in trying to predict cash flow, which ultimately leads to how we get this money invested. As we said, the interest rates have been low. We started consulting with them more and more to see when we heard the trend was going to start to increase, if they would start increasing our accounts. But the bank also has a policy, too, and they classify our transactions into unlimited and limited, and they only allow a certain amount of transfers out of the accounts, the savings and money market accounts. So, I have been limited to three transfers a month out of the major savings accounts into my checking. I believe it goes as high as maybe six, because in June, we did have to violate that a little bit, just because we have three payrolls. And I did get a nice letter from the bank reminding me that what my limit for draws is. Sometimes you have that choice. We also, the timing of our accounts payroll, our check runs, and our payroll has been made to coincide on the same date because that, I don't have to go in for one draw instead of one every other week then. And then we've also had the internal operational policy of holding everything in the savings account until what I call the last minute, until I have to draw it over for actually the payroll or the checks that week. And then on top of all that, you have standard school district practice, which every school has to deal with. On the inflows of cash coming in, summer months are low. I must, I have to meet those payrolls that are coming. We have three payrolls, and then we have a big one, you know, early September. And all it has to happen pretty much before we see the cash receipts coming in from the taxes. As far as the taxes, we get about 3% of the levy in September, about 93% in October, and then the rest of it after that time. So, October is our crucial month when the majority of our cash will be here, and that'll be our opportune time to start investing and coming up with a little bit longer-range plan.
So, these reasons are why during summer months and into September, you may hear us going back and forth about whether or not we need to take out a TAN or a RAN, which is a borrowing in anticipation of that revenue. We hope to not ever have to do that because then you have closing costs and interest and fees. So, if we're able to get through those low months, we obviously want to do that, but in some of the instances, it's not possible. We do have payrolls to make. We do a lot of purchasing over the summer because we want to make sure all of the teachers have what they need to start the school off, the school year off. But we do try to monitor that and schedule things accordingly so that we are monitoring that cash flow so that we're meeting all of our obligations. Then taxes come, and then everyone takes a breath, and it's a little easier.
And we have to focus mainly on the tax part only because, as much as you might want to believe state aid, it has a very predictable monthly, nice consistent flow. It doesn't, it doesn't come in an even pattern like that. In fact, the first big money that we get from state aid is usually more towards November, December, only because September 15th, October 15th, and November 15th, and this is where I don't have hard cash, but they owe us revenue, which is state aid, but we in turn, they're holding on to it. They keep it back to pay our TRS liability as of June 30th. So, that's how, instead of cutting a check to them, they just hold the money. So, I never even see that. I just have to book the revenue expenditure side. And then again, that all state aid is received by June 30th each year, where you would think you've earned it, you should have it by June 30th. If you don't have it, we have some coming in August and September. And then that's up to us, then, to keep up to speed with the invoicing of our revenues, but that is not enough to, you know, cover a check run or a payroll. And that's more like buildings and grounds usage. We have some tuitions that go out to other districts, special education services, things like that. So, that's on the revenue side. Then from the disbursement side, the debt payments are pretty much determined as to date, so that makes it easy trying to predict cash flow. Payroll is fairly consistent, which makes it nice, other than the summertime. And then in June, we have what we call the big balloon payment. The teachers have the option of choosing to pay over 20 or 26 pays. So, at the end of June, I have to have enough cash to meet that last big payroll, which is running between $4.5 to $5 million. So, but that's kind of a good thing because if we can get it in October and set that aside, I can get a longer-term time on the interest. And accounts payable, normal accounts payable, as long as they stay fairly consistent, we have a good process for how we can lay this out to invest. But the big bills are transportation, our BOSI's obligation, some district and charter school tuition payments, and our utilities. And then our health insurance claims, they can be reasonably estimated by the month. We do have some spikes, but we know kind of when those occur, usually after the winter season, the flu season, we see that go up a little bit. And then if there's any special cases out there, those are the ones that might increase the load that we need for cash. Okay. Which takes us to the very last thing. With all that in mind, we do have an opportunity to start investing with the upswing in the market rates, and sometime this fall, you should see us starting to invest in treasury bills. We met with one of our banks, and if you don't know too much about treasury bills, they are short-term. The maturities are a year or less. We have to do them in denominations of $10,000, or you could do them up to $1 million, but it's in $5,000 increments. It's approved by the New York State comptroller. The rates are currently at the highs they've been in a decade. 100% guaranteed, 0% risk. It's going to allow us, as a district, to what we kind of call lathering, like used to do the old CDs, pick the timeframe. The further out we go, the higher the yield will be. And the best thing for me is that the T-bills will turn over on Tuesdays. That's a normal pattern with the bank. And our payroll cash has to be in place by 4 o'clock on Thursday afternoons. And to end this, the rates last week on a 91-day T-bill were 2%, and on 182, we're 2.16, which is a little bit more than .06. So, we're going to, this fall, try to enhance our interest earnings.
So, because Barb has such excellent records in her revenue projections, we will be able to estimate how much can be tied up for the longest period of time and how much we need to step that back month by month or maybe every two months. We will be very conservative in the first year. We need to make sure that we understand and have a good handle on how that cash flow's going to work because the worst thing would be to have the money tied up and needed for whether it was a high-cost claim or non-comp insurance or any major repair that we need in the cash flow. So, we will be conservative. We will make sure we have a large sum of money liquid and available, but we will work to make sure that what we can invest, we will. As part of budget development, we increased our interest earnings projections to $100,000. And as Barb had mentioned, the last four months of this past year, we earned $22,000, and that was not on our full budgeted amount. So, you know, the last four months of the year is when the cash is dwindling and dwindling. So, we're very hopeful and feeling very positive about our goals for the interest earnings for the upcoming year.
The $22,000 is more than the total budgeted amount of revenue we had in last year's budget. I think our total budgeted amount was like $16,000 or $18,000.
Yes.
So, this is a great tool in the tax cap and state aid limitation era.
So, that $100,000 projection that you've been restoring budget, that includes what you expect to make out of the treasury bill?
And even then, you know, we thought that that $100,000 might be low, but we didn't know what the rates would be by now. We didn't know exactly what length we would be able to go, what dollar amount. So, we really wanted to be conservative on that side so that we weren't overshooting our revenue and then needing to not spend on the expenditure side in order to not use fund balance.
That's great.
Thank you, Barb. Barb has done an excellent job, so thank you.
I was just looking at you. The 90 days actually two of seven, and the six months of two twenty-four, which is up seven basis points, which is up basically in a week what we were getting at the beginning of this year. That's what it increased by, just a week.
Well, I appreciate the attention to detail and the thoroughness with which you approached this.
And we'll all be reading our tax protection articles.
Certainly, it certainly demonstrates the thoroughness with which the business office is operating. Thank you both. Last but not least, we have a very draft version of the topics for the year. What is somewhat solidified in here is the budget calendar, budget development timeline. So, as I jokingly said, we hit an all-time record by having a budget presentation in August. As you can see, it's very timely. We also, as a credit to Barb and Laura's office, you know, we've been informed by our internal auditors that they are extremely well-prepared for their arrival, and they anticipate being able to turn around and present to the board their findings as early as September 18th, which is at least, you know, a couple weeks earlier than we normally have, if not a month. So, that's on the schedule for September 18th. And then, you know, we'll look at our long-term budget savings, or excuse me, reserve plan in November. And then we start with our budget forecast in December, which of course is based on projections and a lot of unknown information. And then we'll move into, the picture will get a little clearer as we go into February, and we update from the governor's proposal, CPI, tax levy, TRS rates, looking, moving towards potential reductions or and/or additions in March, fund balance projections in March again, and then the adopted budget in April. So, that is one of the things that's more solidified in the list of topics here. I have our strategic planning updates in here from each of our buildings, as well as myself. In addition to that, you can see that there's some routine things, like the NISBA bylaws, amendments and resolutions, our curriculum, summer curriculum updates from Dr. Shanahan and our team leaders, some construction updates. We'll have a Phase Two planning presentation in September, in addition to a Phase Three planning presentation in November. And then we have a couple new things. We're launching a new Project Lead the Way course this year at the high school for coding. So, we hope to have those folks well-established in what they're doing and able to present to you in January. ESA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, from a federal level, is a very, a new plan that we need to implement this year. So, I've put that in the possible additions column. Dr. Shanahan has been reading that legislation and that plan and solidifying her understanding of it so that she'll be able to present it to you. So, there's some flexibility in this, as usual, but what I really wanted to know is if there was anything on here that may have been overlooked or that you would prefer to see, or if you're comfortable with what we have here, knowing that there's always the opportunity as the year unfolds to add things that are timely and/or relevant.
I had two suggestions for additions. One being, in the past, we've done some kind of updating, so to speak, on the alternative funding committee, like me, some of the, you know, what they're doing, some of the money that's being generated by that, you know, where is it?
There is a Show Us Your Stripes update in November.
And that, but that's just show us your, you know, I guess, you know, if that covers the whole thing, then, you know, that's, that's fine. The other one was maybe, possibly, like, maybe in the spring during budget development, like a transportation committee kind of maybe get those guys to meet again and just kind of get an update on that.
Yes, and the add-on stuff was the GPS.
Yeah. Mrs. Bozinski and I were talking about that the other day. You know, we still have the plan to go through with the second pilot of the GPS app. I did ask the bus company if there was any possibility of adding late buses back to our elementary schools without any increased costs, so somewhat of a wish list item. And of course, they came back and said no. We also talked about some other transportation items, such as the start and end times at the schools and what that might look like in order for us to go back to the start and end times prior to the, you know, bad budget years of the 2008, '09, '10 where that was changed. And of course, there is a significant cost associated with that. So, knowing that that's an item where we get state aid based on what we spend, we would have to front the money in a year where it's available, knowing that we would get aid as it came back. So, it's always an item of discussion amongst the administrative cabinet, particularly the after-school buses at the elementary schools. We just haven't had a budget, as you all know, where we have the ability to front that money, knowing it'll come in and aid the following year. So...
Well, a number of years ago, I know, prior to Mrs. Bozinski passing, when the tech committee met and looked at the walking distances, you know, the distances and what have you, I know one of the hangups, let's say over at Smallwood, was there was no sidewalks at one area, but I believe those have put incense. You know, so maybe just a fresh look at what was done before and see if it makes sense, if the savings make sense or whatever would be a good...
It's kind of changed since you've evaluated all that, so it would be nice to know.
Especially now that Mrs. Bozinski is here.
Yeah. You can just get the band touch, you have it.
We always have, I mean, we always have the report of committees that have met. So, we always have the opportunity, when they meet, to receive those timely updates. But certainly, planning for the transportation committee to be more active is on the list. Good idea.
If I could just go back to the Show Us Your Stripes. Don't we usually in the spring have presentations by the alumni that tell us where their grants were given? Because you, when you talk about stripes, you talk a lot about the inflow, but then usually we have the alumni talk about the help, like who they gave it to and...
Yeah, I have a, it's under the possible additions. So, I do have alumni presentation, and I actually had a question mark there because I couldn't remember why I had it there. So, that clears that up. I know the alternative funding committee doesn't always decide on the grants, so the alumni will sometimes decide on grants. Yeah, but the alternative funding committee with the appeal will then have money available after stripes for their awarding grants. So, there's, like I said, the opportunity for the committee to give updates, but if we wanted to invite the alumni in as a, as a way to present what they're granting annually, that's certainly a good opportunity.
And I just forgot to mention in my alternative funding committee meeting minutes earlier about that opportunity. And just to clarify the flow of things, the Alumni Association receives all the grant requests, and they award their grants. And then whatever they don't award or can't award based on their finances, then they kick over to the alternative funding committee, and we have the option of approving or not certain grants. So, we did actually at our previous meeting, the alternative funding committee approved a grant for the sound systems in the middle school, Gin and Swim area, the Gin and Pool area. So, they're getting a whole new PA system to be able to have announcements of using different things for events and school tasks, I can say that, in the middle school. So, that was a large chunk. The alternative funding committee for $5,000 to get out the boosters, did the balance and so was in the board. So, it makes the money a lot more than the boosters.
Yeah, there seems to be a nice collaboration going on with the PTAs and PTSA and the boosters and the appeal. They've collaborated on...
The plans look really nice out there.
Yeah, they've collaborated on a number of things, the banner system, the portable scoreboards. There's been good articulation and communication there.
How many different pools of money?
Well, the, yeah, the boosters...
The Alumni Association, there's the alternative funding committee.
Which is the appeal, yeah. The appeal is, is under, yeah, it's under the alumni because they have the recognized, what is it, 502?
501.
501, yeah. So, they have the, they're the recognized 501(c)(3). So, the Amherst Appeal, which is where the money goes for the alternative funding committee, and really the Stripes event is their, their main event, that's under the alumni. So, as Laurie had indicated, you know, the alumni, their main fundraiser is the annual golf tournament. When they don't have funds to match all the grant requests that are coming in, you know, they will then kick in and kick over to the appeal, which will then try to pick up the ones if they deem them to be appropriate. The boosters are a separate entity. The boosters are a separate entity, but all of them are somewhat limited in the amount of funds that they have. So, if there's big-ticket items, like a banner system, or those portable scoreboards, or a sound system, we also had a grant where we put a sound, the sound system in the Windermere Odd as well. You know, if they're a bigger ticket item, they try to work together. The PTAs will typically-
That wasn't a grant, that was a-
Donation, yeah, that was a donation. They will typically work together, the PTAs with the principals and the schools, to determine classroom-based grants, our school field trips that they fund. I think we've just been fortunate over the last few years that we have folks that are involved in multiple things, that have been able to connect those dots, so that there's a greater level of articulation. But I think in the end, we're talking about, you know, maybe in total, $20,000 to $30,000, you know, between all of those.
Probably, I mean, I don't, I can't speak to boosters.
Right.
The alternative funding committee, the profit the last couple years that we've been able to use toward grant funding, is about $10,000, $12,000.
From the stripes.
From the stripes event. And then, the alumni foundation has had a larger chunk, but, you know, maybe 15, 20, kind of, I don't know if it's that high. Yeah, so they, you know, they've had a similar amount of, of money that they bring out for grants.
Hector, those reports from his athletic company about the boosters, right?
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Frank, I'll add that in. So, you might recall, last year, we presented the portable scoreboards that the boosters had funded for, you know, our softball field and our fields, baseball field.
And I believe, and I believe last year, when Mrs. Wazinski reported on the stripes event, she talked about the grants that we were able to do through the alternative funding committee, if I remember correctly, or she will this year.
Right. And Ms. Williams just mentioned that we had just over $46,000 come in in grants and donations that we sent to the board, and then increased our appropriation by then.
So, that's the various, all of it's various together.
And they're, and they're typically things we can't fund in the general fund. So, you're, you know, you're looking at field trips, which as you know, were cut out of the budget years ago. You're looking at some technology purchases, you know, classroom supplies, materials. I think our, our faculty and our buildings have really grown to appreciate the level of funding that comes from all of those organizations, and really start to use them to their advantage. You know, there was times, I can recall, as a teacher, you know, in the late '90s, early 2000s, when there wasn't really a good awareness of those funding mechanisms or funds available, where now, they make it widely known that these grants are available, and it's an easy application process, and, you know, sometimes it's approved, and we've had to, up here in central office, we've improved that process a little bit. You may recall in spring of, spring, fall of '16, we talked about that process of increasing our appropriation when these grants are awarded, so it's not a stressor on our budget expenditure limit. In addition to that, there's a pretty sophisticated system with our internal accountant and treasurer to track them. Once you all approve them at the table here, you know, there's a notification that goes out to the person, the grantee, and there's a timeline given to them to make sure they spend it within the appropriate school year. Unfortunately, we have needed, we've needed to develop a system for carrying over unexpended funds, but I think Mrs. Wazinski and Ms. Williams have really set it as a target, anything that's awarded in the current school year, to make sure it gets expended out of that budget, so it doesn't carry over to the following year, or to the next year's budget. So, it's something we look at regularly, but it's certainly not necessarily a gap closer for us, so to speak, in terms of our budget, but it does help us add things to our facilities and/or program that we otherwise wouldn't be able to. So, I have a note for the potential for a transportation committee update. Maybe your other suggestion relative to the alternative funding committee could be combined with an alumni presentation in the spring, if they are available, to talk about grants they've awarded in the current year. That may even be something to do towards June. There's always a meeting in early June that's relatively light, so that might be a good opportunity for that. Any other suggestions or questions? Okay, thank you very much. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. With that, we will need a motion for new business.
I'll make a motion for new business, item F1, A through L, 2, A through D, and 3, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, B through H.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving new business items, F1, A through L, 2, A through D, and 3, B through H, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries 6-0. I'd like to welcome Ms. Anna Hilli to our team. I hope I pronounced your name right.
Yeah.
Great, welcome to our team. We're planning it tonight, so we look forward to working with you.
I'm excited to be here, sir.
Ms. Custody, do we have any follow-up action items?
Just, if you're still interested in more discussion, I can get your phone over from you, so.
No, he couldn't help answering.
Great, great. And then, just to add additional topics to your report.
Okay. And we will need a motion to convene an executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene an executive session for matters regarding member negotiations, litigation, matters regarding particular person.
Second. All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, everybody, for coming.